Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We've got some Minneapolis people or St. Paul people. I shouldn't embarrass you, should I? You're up.
All right, great. Oh.
You've got to do the EDA meeting first, Mayor. That's the first thing, sorry.
That doesn't say that, though. Okay, EDA meeting.
Sorry.
That wasn't on two agendas.
Yeah, we kind of, yeah.
Well, what do we have for anything?
We have to, so as part of...
As part of the EDA formation that we did this year and be able to levy the dollars needed to establish that EDA, you actually have to do that as part of your budget process. And so that needs to be done first before you can do your preliminary levy and budget. And so this is the resolution that would allow for approving that special tax levy and budget.
Right now, you're acting as the EDA, and then you'll be forwarding it to yourselves as the council immediately after, basically.
Yeah, okay.
And the maximum amount, the proposed amount at 85,274 is 50% of the maximum amount is per city council direction for 2025.
So is that taken out of regular agenda, item B?
This is specific EDA agenda right now.
This is an EDA agenda.
Yep, you're acting, this is your first EDA meeting.
We haven't approved the EDA levy yet.
That's what you're doing tonight.
That's why we have to do this.
That's what I'm asking, so we take a B?
No. You're acting as the EDA right now. Look at your EDA agenda, and you have to approve that resolution as the EDA. If you approve that, then it moves and goes to the council.
In the following meeting, we're going to take care of that budget.
Asking for the money in the first one already.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here it is.
You're acting as two different people.
Yep.
You have two personalities going. One is an EDA and one is a council.
Oh, you don't want mine. Council here wishes.
We need to pass the resolution.
Yep.
Wait a minute. Was that, I thought we had it actual written.
It doesn't have to be read.
No?
No, it doesn't.
No.
No, and you're, remember, you're acting very much like as a planning commissioner. You're recommending forwarding to the city council for their review and approval.
Here's the motion.
Yeah. Did someone make a motion?
Nope, not yet. I got a second.
All right.
A motion to approve the resolution for the EDA. Is that what's needed?
Yep.
And forwarding of resolution to city council for consideration.
Which is item five or item B in this one.
In the regular agenda. I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, passed unanimously. All right, 6:33, the EDA meeting is adjourned. Have to say the pledge of allegiance again?
No.
Now you're up, sir.
That's great. I didn't know I was going to get to go to two meetings tonight, so I appreciate that. Jenny is one of our board members. I'm going to put this on my expense report. There are two, okay?
You don't charge extra for the extra meeting.
Yeah. That's wonderful. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Luke Fisher, and I'm executive director at the League of Minnesota Cities. And as I mentioned, I'm joined by my colleague Jenny Max. She's our past president and the Nisswa City Administrator. I've got to tell you, we're really excited to be here tonight to do some really important and special recognition. Jenny's going to do the heavy part of that. And before we get into that specific part, I think it's always important for people to know just who it is that's recognizing you, right? Who's this guy from St. Paul? You accuse me of being from Minneapolis, right?
Sorry about that.
Right to my heart, let me tell you. But the League of Minnesota Cities is an association that represents 839 of the state's 855 cities. The handful or so that aren't our members are cities that are so small you wouldn't know, though. Our largest member is Minneapolis. Our smallest member is the city of Berry. Population, guesses for Berry, anyone?
Eight.
Eight? Any other guesses? What's that?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three? Any others? Police chief?
Thirteen.
Nope. No guesses, thirteen? Okay. Well, if we're playing prices, right rules, you're out. Berry has just 19 people. And so as an association, we represent everyone from Minneapolis to Wake Park to Berry. And in that work, we get to interact with our members all the time. What does that look like? Well, we advocate on behalf of our members at the state Capitol. Something like 250 city officials participate in our policy development process every year. They're really grounded in city halls across the state. We answer questions from our members. Everything from how do I allow chickens in my backyard to how do I hire a great city administrator. We handle about 5,000 of those inquiries every year. We see about 3,000 city officials at a training conference or event. Our magazine hits about 8,000 desks across city hall every year. And those are all really big numbers, but they're important contexts to let you know that in our work, we get to see the very best. We get to see projects that are really cool. We get to see projects that are innovative. We get to see people who are leading the way, people who are doing it differently, and people who are really making a mark. And that's what we're here to do tonight. We're here to recognize you, Mayor Miller, for your service and for the significant contributions that you've made to the community over the years. Jenny's going to talk a little bit more about specifically why you received this important recognition from the league, but...
I paid her good money for that.
You did not. You did not. I'm not going to let you get away with that. But before I turn it over to Jenny, I thought I'd just offer a personal reflection because over the course of the last seven and a half years I've been working at the league, I've got the chance to get to know you just a little bit. And here's what I'd tell you about Mayor Miller. He's a convener. I haven't been to a meeting in the greater Wake Park area that Rick hasn't been at and that Rick hasn't invited somebody to. Those are special people that bring others together and invite them to be at the table. Rick is a visionary leader. Y'all have contributed to the Ledge. I know that he's been your leader through that project. And a community doesn't get to do big projects like that without clear leadership. And it's a community that hasn't forgotten the core services either, right? The day-to-day stuff matters, and it's the stuff that people take for granted until it's not there. And it takes a special person to see the big picture and care about the details the way that you've had. You've been an empowerer. Your city administrator, Shawna Johnson, was on the league board and was our president. That doesn't happen without council support and without a mayor saying, you go get that and you go do that and you make a difference. And Shawna did, with your help and with your support. You've done it right over 30 years, and that's something that I've personally seen, and I wanted to share that with you tonight and let you know that in my book, you've made a generational difference here in Wake Park. People are going to remember the work that you've done here for a long time. And I wanted to say congratulations, and I'll turn it over to Jenny.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, City Council Administrator Johnson. I'm pleased to be here this evening to recognize Mayor Rick Miller, winner of the League of Minnesota Cities CC Ludwig Award for 2024. The award was first presented to Mayor Miller early this summer at the league's annual conference in Rochester. The CC Ludwig Award is the league's highest honor for elected city officials. Recipients are chosen for their vision, statesmanship, and unwavering commitment to the public good. The award was established in 1962 and is named for Clarence C. Ludwig, who served as the league's executive director from 1935 to 1959. Minnesota is fortunate to serve as the home of many outstanding city officials who are dedicated to serving local government. The league receives several strong nominations for the CC Ludwig Award each year, and few recipients are as deserving as Mayor Miller. His service to the community goes back to 1986, when he was first elected to the Wake Park City Council. The effects of his leadership extend beyond city hall into the region and well beyond. As one of Mayor Miller's nominators noted, the mayor's candidacy for the award is, quote, "distinguished by his remarkable service, which consistently exceeds the expectations of his position. His tireless efforts have not only brought about significant improvements in Wake Park, but have also positively impacted municipalities across Minnesota." The mayor's nominators point to many projects and initiatives that have benefited by his leadership over the years. His work includes spearheading the construction of the Ledge Amphitheater, a destination that has resulted in an economic boost to the city and surrounding area. In 2022, the league recognized Wake Park with the City of Excellence Award for the Ledge project. Involvement in securing regional sales tax authorization among the six St. Cloud regional cities, and leadership in infrastructure projects like the Lake Wobegon Trail Connection and the Second Street South Corridor, to name a few. Mayor Miller's years of elected service were preceded by service to community and country as a U.S. Navy veteran, a former military reservist, and former member of the city's rescue squad and fire department. Perhaps one of his most enduring contributions is his commitment to the young people of the community as a former Little League coach and leadership in construction of Little League fields in the city. The mayor serves on the St. Cloud CPO Executive Board, the St. Cloud Metropolitan Transit Commission Board of Commissioners, and the Stearns County Municipal League. The mayor's nominators note that, quote, "His active participation in League of Minnesota Cities and coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities events, along with his willingness to testify at the Minnesota State Legislature when needed, highlights his dedication to advancing the collective interests of all Minnesota cities." When we read through the numerous letters of support submitted by peers and colleagues of Mayor Miller, we see words and phrases like proactive, committed, strategic, compassion, integrity, vision, and many others. Those attributes are testaments to his dedication and his character. To further honor Mayor Miller, the league has produced a short video that was first shown at our annual conference this past summer.
Anyone that wants to learn a little bit from Mayor Miller, who's had over 30 years of experience in working in the public sector, I think it's be brave, be bold, and be humble.
I was elected in 2010 and took office in 2011. And one of the first introductions I got was from Mayor Miller. And so not only was he a mentor to me, but he got me used to kind of the policies and procedures and the workings of the sixth city.
Mayor Miller is the kind of person that earns respect, doesn't command it. He treats people the way any one of us would want to be treated and just has a very fantastic demeanor with residents, working with folks.
Mayor Miller is very versed at running his council meetings as far as sometimes it could be like herd and cats, and it takes a lot to manage that.
Well, Mayor Miller understands the balance between, I don't want to say right and wrong, but fiduciary responsibility and moving forward. How to move the needle without disrupting existing content. How to find the balance between commercial, business, residential needs without disrupting common day or activity life.
It's never been about Mayor Miller. It's always been about wanting to better the lives of the residents and the community as a whole. I think that's a rare trait to find in folks these days.
He's been involved in the Lions Club. He's been involved in our family Fun Fest committees. There isn't much that he hasn't touched within this community.
Everything Mayor Miller does comes from a place of greater good for the community rather than serving any one person or interest. He really strives to forward causes that are going to be beneficial to the city.
There are so many projects here within the city of Wake Park that Mayor Miller has provided us with guidance and leadership, and I can't thank him enough for the guidance that he's provided to the city council, the leadership that he's provided to me, and also to the staff. I can't thank him enough for the work that he's done for this great community.
Mayor Miller, on behalf of the League of Minnesota Cities... On behalf of the League of Minnesota Cities, Luke and I are so pleased to be here tonight to congratulate you for your 2024 CC Ludwig Award.
Thank you.
No dessert. We'll leave that to you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We want to get a picture before we go.
All right. Absolutely.
Yep. You want us, are we good here, or you want us down in front, or?
Come on down in the front.
Now we can get to real business. All right, Lions, Vince.
First of all, I want to say thank you guys for letting us have a few minutes of your time, City Administrator Shawna and Mayor Miller. I was actually pretty, it was nice to see that little ceremony there. It was pretty awesome. Congratulations on all your accomplishments.
Thank you.
One of the things I noticed in the video there, it did mention Lions Club, so I thought, you know what? That's a perfect parlay for me, right? Got to take the opportunity when you can. Needless to say, I'm Vince Thiel. This is my wife, Tricia Thiel. We've been Lions members for about 23 years, almost 24 years. We've served in various capacities between local and in the district level. Our district actually covers a very large area. We're District 5 M-8, but my wife and I are tasked with the global extension team position in our district. One of the things we do is that we look at communities that had a Lions Club or don't have one and try to see if it's a good fit or not. About a month ago, I met with Mayor Miller here, right here at city hall, and I had some discussion with him, and I explained to him that the Lions of District 5 M-8 would like to start a Lions Club here. And I guess one of the things that we found has worked very well in the past is we go into a community, we talk to the city leaders, and just explain to them what and why and how a Lions Club can benefit your community and why. The individuality of it, there's other Lions Clubs. St. Cloud has a couple Lions Clubs, Sauk Rapids has a couple Lions Club, but we personally feel Wake Park should have their Lions Club back. There's different things that we can do that are just, every community is better with a Lions Club because of the support they have. We have 100 years of service. We're the largest service organization in the world. There's nobody larger than us. We have about 1.4 million members across the globe. Some of our global causes are diabetes, vision, hunger, environment, and childhood cancer. Now, each Lions Club has their own individual task or projects they work on, and that's something that that club would decide. But basically, what I'm looking to present to you guys and ask from you is, I understand we all have a busy schedule. Right now, things are pretty fast-paced, and some people may say, I don't have time for something else on my plate. I get that, we're all busy. But you as community leaders know, so we can help us identify where your community needs are, and also you may know people that may be interested in joining. As we come in and talk to people, all we're asking for is kind of a warm introduction. I'll be happy to talk to anybody. I was looking at trying to get into the chamber meeting. I talked to the chamber, and I found out today, or actually last Thursday, that I needed to be a member to speak, and we're not a member. They want 499 for us to become a member, so we're probably not going to be a member of the chamber at this point. I explained to them that 499 could buy a pair of glasses for somebody that could be, you know, do good, that could feed a lot of people, you know, feed some of the homeless or whatever it may be. But needless to say, in a nutshell, what I'm kind of looking for is kind of your blessing and support with this project. Obviously, you guys don't have to make a decision tonight, but what we're looking for is just to kind of meet people and try to see what the needs are. And you guys can help identify. I mean, the police department may run across things that there's no other organization taking care of certain needs that where Lions may step in. The Ledge was mentioned. I know the Ledge is shorthanded for help. Maybe Lions could help out there. There's different things, and the neat part about it could be specific to Wake Park, just like Sauk Rapids does things specific to Sauk Rapids or St. Cloud. So, you know, altogether, I just know there's no downside to having a Lions Club. The support, the leadership, the training, we've really traveled light years in our education, and dependent upon what you want to do with it, it's unique to that specific group. But I just know Wake Park could be, you know, a much better place to have. They can fill needs and help things that aren't being met today. And we have community needs assessments and different tools where we can come into communities and try to figure out what's needed and try to get that done. So any questions?
Counsel, got any questions? Nope. All right.
But in a nutshell, thank you very much for your time. I very appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Vince. Thank you. All right, is there anyone here for public input? Anyone, public input? Anyone? Review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items, approve 72224 council meeting minutes. Item B, approve 8524 council meeting minutes. And item C, approve change order number one, 10th Avenue, Solith.
Move to approve.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda, consider a new law firm to be city attorney.
I'll make a motion to enter into negotiation with Flathery and Hood.
I'll second. Motion, second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item B, EDA 2025 levy approval.
Council members, I'll just touch on it real quick. This is basically the same aspect you just reviewed previously as the EDA for 2025 levy budget in an amount of 85,274, setting that formally for the year. That's 50% of the maximum allowed under state statute, as recommended for approval by the EDA board.
Which is us.
Counsel?
I'll move to approve the adoption of the attached resolution setting the 2025 levy amount for the city of Wake Park Economic Development Authority.
I'll second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item C, 2025 rural tax rate.
Okay, annually, the rural tax rates are set for the following year based on what the urban tax rate percentage increase or decrease was from the previous year. And for 2024, the urban tax rate percentage increase was 3.024%, and so therefore, the rural tax rate percentage for 2025 is proposed to increase 3.024%. And with those calculations, they are as follows. For tax codes 9804 and 9805, it will be 48.221%. For tax code 9807, 24.789%. And for tax code 9808, at 21.974%. And staff is recommending approval of these rates.
I'll move to approve the 2025 rural tax rates.
I'll second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item D, fund transfer.
Okay, I am, we're requesting a transfer of $325,000 and $134,180 needed to move the money from local sales tax fund to the debt service fund for payment of principal and interest that will come due during the year 2025 for the city of Wake Park's taxable general obligation bond, Series 2018. And this transfer must be completed before the tax abatement, and debt service levies can be canceled or payable in 2025, and this is done before your resolutions for the levy. And staff is recommending approval.
I'll move to approve it. I'll second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item E, 2025 general fund preliminary budget, preliminary levy, and revised preliminary levy.
Okay, the city is required to submit to the county auditor a 2025 general fund preliminary budget and preliminary property tax levy. The resolutions were attached to the packet, and these numbers can be adjusted, decreased only during the budget year, but cannot be increased. And then, do you want to announce the, or should I want to announce the hearing for it? Okay. The city council will hold a public hearing regarding the 2025 proposed budget and tax levy on Monday, December 2, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. at Wake Park City Hall. So your first resolution for adopting is the preliminary 2025 general fund budget. That is proposed to be set at, for the preliminary, at $13,420,258, and that is a 6.8% increase from last year. And like I said before, these numbers can decrease during budget process, but not increased.
How much was that increase?
6.8%. That's the higher.
That's in today's world.
Yes, that's the high mark right now.
But that's, number will be revert, or will be lowered.
We will work out.
Well, it's up to us, but yeah.
Well, staff is recommending approval of that.
I'll move to approve the 2025 preliminary fund budget.
I'll second.
Or should say general fund budget.
Further discussion.
I have a question for you.
Yep.
Now, we talked a little bit about what that would mean per household.
Well, I'll get to that with the levy part of it. I have that calculation.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
Okay, and then the next two motions, I'm going to kind of talk about them together, therefore regarding the property tax levy. And when you previously, the first resolution for that includes the bonding stuff that you just approved regarding the transfer that sales tax is paying for, and we have to do the original resolution and then a follow-up resolution with those taken out of it.
Oh.
So with the revised preliminary property tax levy, that is set right now at $12,172,933, which is a 5.125% increase in the urban tax rate at this point, which would mean on about a $200,000 property, an increase of about $102. And like I said before, that's the high watermark. And staff is recommending approval of that, of both of those resolutions. I'd like them motioned separately, though.
Okay.
That's number two, so we got to scroll up for me, Shawna.
Yeah, there's number two and then number three.
Yep.
You want to do the number two one first, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because then you're going to revise it afterwards, taking out that.
Taking out the $325,000.
Yes.
I'll move to approve the resolution adopting the preliminary 2025 property tax levy.
I'll second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. And the other one.
Yep. I'll move to approve the resolution adopting the revised preliminary 2025 property tax levy.
I'll second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Through bills.
I have no questions on the bills. I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. I don't have anything else. If?
No, sir.
John?
No, sir.
Chief?
No, sir.
Audience? Audience? Avery?
Not that I can think. Next meeting will be the, is it the 7th of October?
Okay, first Monday.
The first Monday in October. Ooh, I got the date right this time. Usually I'm a day or two off. October 7.
All right, nothing else, we are adjourned at 6:59. All right, nothing else. We are adjourned at six-fifty-nine.